I was supposed to say let's put it on the twain.
We can do it on the third person.
Okay, so can we start over and reconvene?
All right, I'd like to reconvene the January eighth, two thousand nineteen meeting here on January twenty-third at noon. I see we have all our council members present in full form. Where we left off is discussion and consideration of the
Charter.
Charter changes information, or I think we were just kind of starting to talk about it, Nick. Here at the last meeting, that's why we reconvened to today because this, I know you had, you wanted to say it would be a charter change. So, I don't know who wants to take this or where we left off, quite frankly, but
You left off with Councilman Epps made a comment that he liked six or seven. Something about like the idea, but not sure.
Okay, so we're just talking at this point, maybe what, how many, if we did go that route, that we would like to see. Do we want to take a straw poll vote, go around the room and see what?
I have notes from the last meeting where you all sort of put your thoughts forward. I think except for mine, I just have to go to that part of my notes. Five members plus the mayor was Mr. Councilman Dispensieri, four districts, two at large, mayor votes in case of tie. Mayor Polino said a council number six, probably seven every two years. Referendum, sorry, using a referendum, leary of districts. And something about switching the tide, which I'm not sure I understood. Councilman, Councilor Vandenberg said seven members plus the mayor, districts was not sure. Councilor Epps said six or seven, he was indifferent, but liked the idea of districts. And I was having the one who didn't say. So I'll just say that I liked, I think six is probably a good number. And I do like the idea of districts, I just don't know if we can iron all that out in time.
And when we're talking numbers, are we all talking total or plus mayor? When, so when you say six, Mary, do you mean five councils and one mayor?
Right. So And so I think, I don't know what, I don't know if I said, do you know what you wanted?
I think mine was five plus mayor, so it's
Oh, yeah.
Around the same, ours is different.
Yeah, I'd just like to see, I mean, if the mayor's not going to vote, then he only votes in a tie, and that's been the tradition. And then now this gives the mayor never a chance to vote if there's a full council, which I personally think the mayor should be heard in a sense that Good to know where the mayor's thinking. So I can basically sit here and not do anything, but if it's heated decision, that's why it's good to have six and then mayor being a tiebreaker. But to me, that's what I'd prefer, because it's four now, then you keep it the same by adding two more and then just more of that. Districts, I just don't think we're big enough for districts. I mean, sometimes it's hard enough pulling teeth just to get someone to run at times. So having districts or at large, I would struggle with having that. And I talked to, had an opportunity to talk to some other neighborhood villages and stuff. What was it that Weddington, Weddington has
Weddington has the same we do.
The same as we do, Wesley Chapel has more, I think.
I think Wesley Chapel has more.
Yeah, so
Weddington, Weddington has districts.
Yeah, I don't, yeah, but they're bigger, vaster.
Seventeen miles or something.
Population wise, they're going to be a lot more. So we're kind of in a, we're confined. So it's just, you know, the districts are going to end up being probably neighborhoods that you're picking, I would assume.
Well, yeah, I mean, if we had, full population is what?
Sixty-eight hundred, yeah.
Sixty-eight hundred, if you had four districts, I guess you'd be about eighteen hundred a district or whatever.
Weddington has
I'd want public input either way, whether it's, you know, we're doing it or whether we're taking it to the election. Either way, I'd want public input. So I guess from my standpoint, I'm going to sort of rely on the public to tell me what I should like or don't like, because I'm truly indifferent.
Well, when it comes to that, in terms of getting the villages' input, I went back and looked through all the emails that we got for the last time we tried to change the charter. And there are many, many, many of them that say they don't really care what the charter change is. It's the fact that we're changing the charter without letting them voice, like, without letting them vote. So
Were they saying voice or vote? I didn't go through the emails.
Some said voice, some said vote.
Anyway, you told me some just didn't want anything to be changed without it going to
To a referendum, I would support a council initiated amendment with a referendum. That was one.
Well, I mean, I know I've been saying we wanted to do this, you know, quicker, I suppose. But if it's, you know, if it's going to take us, we're not going to be able to do it by the next election anyway because of time. You know, constraints and stuff, then I think we probably should go to a referendum. And actually have a vote rather than a voice, you know, voice, you could have sixty people show up.
Right.
Right.
Whereas a vote, it goes out to everybody and then you actually get an actual vote. Yeah, then you get an actual vote, you know, of the people. I mean, at that point, I would say we would defer to it to public wants if they want districts, if they
So if that's the case, Nick, then what I would see is two things on the voting thing. When they go to vote for the next election come twenty-two, nineteen, there will be two things added to it. Number one is, you know, moving from four council people to whatever we decide. It's going to be our recommendation, so they don't have a slew of choices. Going to five councilmen with the mayor or six councilmen with the mayor, I think is what the consensus is. And see which one they vote for. That would tell us something. And then secondly, do we want districts? Meaning that town, areas of the town being represented. And then the following two years, we would get the results back by that time and then put in place, if they wanted districts, put in place the districts. If they wanted six council member, then you have slots for six council members. But getting it to, to your point, getting it to the next election is going to be a bit of a challenge, I might use, so.
Well, if we, depending on how many, if we recommend, if we, however, whatever we decide in terms of how many people we're adding, if we, let's just say we add two people. So then in twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-one
Twenty-twenty-one.
Twenty-twenty-one, would there be four slots open? Or would there be three slots open? And then that second additional slot goes in two years later? Do you do
I don't know if that's done by the Board of Elections at that point, if they decide.
But then, or do you appoint somebody for twenty-nineteen? Like, how does that work?
I think that might be Board of Elections that deals with that as far as, I'm not sure. We have to find out.
Yeah, Christine, are you able to reach out to the Board of Elections?
That's something that we need to figure out.
Because I think once we get to a number, then I think what the way they do it, you always have, well, it is now as it stands.
Right, two and two.
Existing members, so it's a continuing
Right, I understand, but if you're adding two additional spots, then you've got four and you've got two. Or do you do
Three.
Three and three, but then how do you get that second additional spot not going out to, what would it be, twenty-twenty-three?
It's in the charter amendment when you, I'm looking at the statutes now. And it's pre, they're almost like à la carte type things that you decide to amend. So when you, so depending on which one we're talking about, if we're talking about the number of council members, you're deciding whether you want that every other year. And you're putting in there what year you want to introduce that additional seat. So that's, it's almost pre-prescribed, that's just the seats.
But that, but that's us, that's the, that's the charter saying, you guys tell us. My question is, what do you guys think we should do? How do you think we should handle that? Because I don't think we need four in one year and two in the other.
You're on to something with what you're saying about, all right, so the public says yes. Now what? So we, it's December, we've got two new council members coming in. Does that mean now all of a sudden we have these slots instantaneously? The public voted, there's two new slots, do we appoint them?
Do we appoint one and then we do
Vote one.
I would think there'd be an effective date that goes into it.
There would be, but I think per the charter, we figure out what that effective date is. But that's the question, is how do you, how do you structure that?
So let me make, maybe this will help, I don't know if it will or not. But if we're telling it as an opinion, one of them, we have to decide which seat is alternating. But essentially what you would do is you would take one of those two seats and make sure that one is alternating on the other year and the other one is not. And if the mayor is still every two years, then you're just splitting those two and putting them on opposite ends. So the next, so the next election would be one, and then I'm guessing the next election after that would be the second seat.
So then, so then the, so then the second seat essentially would go into effect for four years unless we appoint somebody.
Yes.
Or unless you take the top three vote getters. I mean, I don't, that's why I'm asking, I've been thinking about this and I don't know.
Or you just don't run that election until that, the following, the next, until the four years after.
That's what I'm saying, so we, so we've got two, so I'm just saying, and I'm taking the number two, that we've got two additional council people. And these, everybody wants it, so then, but we're then waiting for four years to get that second seat? And that feels like that's just
I know it seems like it'd be easier to do with five and, and one.
But then you've got three running and two, I don't know, I just
We're going to catch up with it.
Yeah.
So, so you're asking what the board would prefer?
Yeah. Because I mean, I feel like the charter says that we can decide, so that's my
Right.
Maybe if you're adding, if we're going to six council members and you're adding four, the four top vote getters with one, the one with the lowest
So you're not adding four, you're only adding two.
Well, plus the two that
Right. Yeah, but you don't want four and two, like you want three and three.
Right, but let me finish my
Sorry.
The, you have, essentially, you want six people. Two are automatically staying on for two more years, these two that were here are running for the four-year term, we're adding two more years. What I'm saying, out of those four people, the one who gets the less, the least amount of votes has a odd year term for that year. And then it, they're only good for three years, meaning, does that make any sense?
No.
Oh, you mean you appoint that third person, use that person to fill the extra seat?
Right, right, right. And then, then you get the six right away. But that person who's appointed or gets the least amount of votes ends up, their term is not the four-year that these other three people, because these three are getting Or two, or, yes, yes.
To the next election.
So there will always be, then the next election, there will be three people running, three people on board.
So then, but then, so it's the least amount of votes and then that person has to run again in two years?
Well, in two years, that's, that's like what the mayor does at least.
And I think that happens when we
Pick a team.
Well, when you first, and when we first established the charter, that, that is kind of what they had to do. They put two people in the two-year terms and then they put the others in the four-year terms.
Right, right. And I don't know how they got there, if it was on total votes or whatever, but you could do it on total votes.
Well, I think when, when we, when the town originated, they just appointed.
That's really funny.
Well, they
So they, until the initial election provided by section whatever, John Carr is hereby appointed mayor, Joe Ardre, Jane Smith, Kathy Spain, Gordon Strayer are hereby appointed members of the council. They shall possess, may exercise the powers and duties, so on and so forth. And then it says, the qualified voters of the entire village shall elect the members of the council, except as provided by this section. Members are elected to a four-year term. In nineteen ninety-five, two candidates receiving high numbers of votes are elected to four-year terms. And the two candidates receiving the next highest votes will, well, are elected to a two-year term.
Right. That's what I just said, and I didn't even know that existed, so I was on to something.
Before we ask staff to research more, whatever needs done, how, how important is this to everyone? I'm only asking the question because it's really not important to me. And I, that's just where I'm at. I want to be supportive of the majority, if you guys want it, I want to support you. But I, it's not that important to me. I, I don't, if I had a crystal ball and said things would be easier with six people rather than five, that'd be nice, but I don't. And I don't know what's going to happen. And I don't know how
I guess my opinion, the opinion of one, being such a small board, one person announces he's going to be gone and stuff like that. And it just, you know, it, one person makes a difference, as we've learned in a meeting like that. You have six, chances of two people being out or whatever for as long as, take vacations and get that all that. But I just see it as something that, okay. And whether it goes to districts or not, maybe that's a fair way to, to get the voices of Marvin. But I think it's, it just makes it easier where we're not, you know, that's the difference of how votes go and how things happen in here.
So do you like it?
I do. I mean, but I know you had brought it up initially.
Yeah.
We talked about that.
Again, I think it's, yeah, it's a similar type thing, instead of just having two people, you have, you have more, more voices. I kind of like the district idea because like I said, it's president, you know, you don't end up with, again, what's happened many times. I mean, you know, me and Ross lived on the same block, I mean, Ron lived, they're two blocks away from each other. You had people, at one point, I think the whole board came from Canfield Creek. You know, so I mean, it gives more representation to the people
Right.
Around, they feel like they have more representation maybe, you know.
If I might hold that point, that thought, so what happens if your district five doesn't, nobody shows up? Then you are okay with appointing someone for that, to represent that district? Or do you still go by the votes, total votes? And then that, maybe that person who got the least amount of votes is appointed to represent that district?
I think we'd still have to appoint, it would have to be appointed somebody that lives in that district.
I mean, if you're going to districts, you're going to districts.
And if that seat is already filled, that person holds office until a new person is, is found, so you always have that seat.
You always have
Right, yeah, if somebody doesn't, like now, if
But if he doesn't
Come December, myself and Mary decide not to run and nobody else runs, we'd still be holdovers until
We would, until somebody was
We talked about population, but if, if the people want it, if it goes to a vote, people want it, why does it have to be split up to five or six? If we're looking to be fair, you know, maybe someone tells us, we talked about someone telling us how to break into the district, and I forget who that was. Cog.
Yeah, this is
If cog tells us, hey, these, this is the best setup, if the people say they want districts, and the best setup really is four districts. Does anyone have a problem with that?
Well, I mean, I, I think, I would imagine cog also would want basically very similar number, I mean, you know, it can't be exact, but you know, but They wouldn't want one, I don't think they'd want one where one's twenty-five hundred residents and one's five hundred. You know, they'd want it to be
And I don't think neighborhoods can be split.
Ideally, yeah, ideally
Well, yeah, you can.
You got two, you could, you're back to multiple people running one neighborhood.
Right, yeah. I mean, you, you could split neighborhoods, but I mean, it's
So there's different ways to proportionate according to that, so again, it's, the statute, our statute is pretty à la carte, right? So you just, you're either choosing single-member districts, a portion to the district in a certain, certain number. Ward seats, at-large seats. So I guess cog just takes up your population, divides it several different ways, as long as it meets one of these ways of, these possibilities, I guess.
If you do districts, is there a minimum number?
I don't see anything about number in here at all.
What about, after the district is established, what does it take to change? Is there a
That's a good question, that's actually a question I am curious.
Well
How do you change it?
Yeah, that's what happens in bigger governments, gerrymandering and they, they, they get their districts where they know they're going to get the vote and stuff. And that's what I don't want to get involved in. It's like have a
Let me
Third party basically deciding, a cog coming in and changing it, or maybe making
Ultimately, we have to approve it, so
But make an ordinance to the effect that a third party can only change the meeting that goes
Putting that in the charter.
Right.
That's what I was just going to say, unless you put it in the charter that it has to be another, another, what do you call it, referendum? Because these are very vague, they just say, look, this is your structure of government districts.
Because for all we know
Portioned, and that's it.
This whole thing where the state legislature has the donut holes in effect, that may go away a very short amount of time. And all of a sudden, they're either put into communities or, and I know there was talk by some elected officials to merge communities together too. So which is, becomes, you know, a potential issue down the road and stuff.
So I, I know that I didn't chime in, so I'll just say that in terms of, I don't, actually, I don't think that Council Vandenberg did either in terms of importance. I don't know if you want to go first, but
No, go ahead.
I don't know that, for me, it's a question of importance so much as a question of timing. I feel like we're kind of at that point, one way or the other, where we need to, whether it's this council or the next council, should start talking about increasing the seat. I think now that we're up to, we're nearing the seven thousand number, I think, right? So when you consider it that way, there probably should be a seat for, I would like to think, at least every thousand people in general, a general rule of thumb. So to me, it's more a matter of have we reached that point? Have we grown up enough that we need more voices represented? So do I feel strongly, I feel strongly about that. I feel strongly that we have enough people on the council to represent voices fairly and make sure that a number of views are represented. I think we are at that point where we at least need one more, maybe two. I also feel very strongly about public input, referendum whenever possible. And with that, I mean, unless, you know, we had hordes of people here, I think I mentioned before, you know, saying, change it, change it, change it, we need it, we need it. I mean, then, then maybe you can see doing a vote on it if you really had that kind of support. But other than that, I think a referendum is always the right way to go. So I just, to answer your question about importance, that's, that's, I feel it's time to grow a little, I just don't know how, that's time to do it.
Well, you two were both six total.
I was seven total, six council and the mayor.
And Joe? Are you six and mayor?
That's what I was, yeah.
I'm indifferent, so I would tend to go with what's easier to execute, which I think, we didn't work it out completely, but I think you and I both agree, one is easier to select.
Yep.
Two, and cheaper for the village, not that, not that we're breaking the bank with these stipends, but the reality is one less mouth to feed. So I would lean towards the six total.
I mean, I'm seven and no districts, that's, I don't think we're quite big enough for districts yet.
We're going like this.
I thought you did.
No.
Can I just ask from a budgeting standpoint, would this be something y'all think that you would appoint in next, in this year or?
I think that's, I think that's where we come down to, if it, is it, how many are you adding? So if it's one, then I would say, in my opinion, would be probably not. They vote on it this year, you add the third in two years. If it's two, then I think you'll probably appoint one or like Joe said, the top, you know, four getters. The top three get four years, the fourth one gets two years, and they have to run again in two years. So, but I think if it's just one, you push it off for two years. I think if it's more than one, then you, you're, you do some sort of finagling to get it done.
More than one, meaning five total council people.
Meaning six total council people.
Six, oh, I see.
Yeah. I'm just leave the mayor, the mayor has to be here, so let's just put the mayor
Mayor's always on the two-year.
Correct, so let's just
So we're just hiring council members.
Yeah.
Nick, if you were a council of one, what would you be doing? And the reason I ask you that is because it, you know, this is something that
Yeah, I mean
Is important to you.
Again, I, I, I do like the district's idea. To me, almost the district is more important than the number of council people.
Yeah, I'd say that too.
I feel like I, I want more diversity on the council and more spreading out, maybe more, nowhere you get, I mean, not that we get a lot, but you do get people that'll say, well, nobody's representing me. Or, you know, it's, it's, everybody's from the west end, the east end, the west end. You know, everybody's in Mother Creek, everybody's in Firestone, everybody's in Canfield, you know, you don't have any, you know, actual body speaking for us. I mean, I'm, I guess I'm more in favor of the district, even more than increasing the council. I mean, I think we need to increase the council at least one, because, you know, I think that's, if we had, if we have four, if we can do, if we did four districts, one at large and the mayor at large. So you'd have two at-large members that, you know, would represent, you know, or could be elected from any area, you know, the mayor and then one council person. But you'd have, you know, four council people that would just represent, they represent the village, but they, you know
Four districts, in which a district
And I think four districts, you know, without population is
So then two at large, so then that would be six.
One at large, but the mayor was, mayor was also at large, obviously. So I'm saying the mayor would be basically an at-large member and the, and the one council person would be at large.
Okay.
And four. And I think our population, like you said, it's, for four is, is fine, I think, because you're, you're getting close to that eighteen-hundred, you know, range of per, per people per district, you know.
And I keep, my, one, my mind goes to that HOA board or president's board that's just been formed. And, you know, when you look at the number of people that are attending, which is great, all, the whole sphere behind that is this idea that they want to, you know, to be able to exercise their input somehow. And so that to me, in and of itself says, why have a circuitous route to that input? Why not make sure you just start enough seats, placements and districts set up so that you're inviting those people directly to the council? As opposed to having this roundabout room? That to me just seems a lot more valid.
I, I know Joe's brought it up, but I don't really see that you're going to have nobody running from, from the district, from the hero. You have the district, somebody's going to run, they'll, they'll get, you know, they'll find somebody in their district that they want to support, if they'll, they'll run. So I don't really see that as a, I mean, if you had fifteen districts, I mean, but, I mean, you know, for four districts, I don't think that, that would be a problem, getting, you know, representation of people that want to be involved, you know, that would
And I go back to this idea that if you, if you build it, they will come, right? I mean, right now, you sort of just, this is a rule of economics. When you just sort of leave something open, remember my one-on-one economic state, a lot, no one will, everyone will assume someone else is doing it. But if you literally put in front of them, look, this spot, very close to you and evidently empty, right? It just brings it right to their doorstep and they, and, and people will begin to talk about it and hopefully be motivated to fill it. As opposed to now, everyone is sort of assuming someone else is doing it. Kind of puts responsibility on, on local areas to be sure that they're represented too.
So do we want to vote on the two different items in terms of giving staff direction? Or do we want to continue to discuss at next meeting?
I'm okay with making a decision today if we want to just kind of keep the ball rolling, but Nick doesn't, you know.
Just for research purposes?
Do a straw poll first, or what are we, what are we asking? If we want, one, first of all, we, are we asking if we want to, kind of like what the voters are going to get? Do you going to ask for a number, total number of council members? And then the second thing is
Well, are we all in agreement that we want to add? I mean, I know you said you didn't really care.
Before we go there, financially, with the stipends, that would add what? One would add five, you're in.
We were just talking about it, what is your monthly
Forty-eight hundred.
Four hundred.
So it was roughly six thousand a year per person, and that's
Forty, forty-eight hundred.
Forty-eight hundred.
Forty-eight hundred a year?
Forty-eight hundred.
I just got my tax.
But all the money they're spending on stuff like this.
Another binder, so it's not
Another email
Two binders, we need two binders.
Another phone.
Another phone.
It does, it does cost a little more, but it's, it's something people want. It's fair, it's a fair representation of the people, you know, it's worth the, the extra expenditure. But I think all in, we're five grand plus.
Whatever materials cost, yeah.
I'm not totally concerned, I don't think it's going to be that kind of expenditure as it would, you know, on the spend from building it.
I just was curious, so just, usually phones are issued, stipends, whatever else.
Well, I mean, obviously, it's going to be an increase of some sort, I think it's
I actually think that when you look at this, going to six with all the damn committees, we have to assign everybody at the beginning of the year. Out a little bit more and, you know, more chance of us getting to these meetings too. So that's, would be another point in favor of, you know, because it's usually, you know, you take it, you know. I mean, so, I mean, it just opens it up and it, you don't have to sit on three different committees or whatever.
Sir Finn's right, you want to go around the room and first ask if you care, if you want it.
Let's say we at least care.
Do you care?
I care.
Do you care?
I'm indifferent.
Do you care?
Yeah, I do.
I care.
Seven.
Total.
Is that the question?
Without mayor.
Six.
Oh, I thought we were doing with mayor, because the mayor's.
Well, mayor's, anyways, he's two years, he's not.
Six council people.
Five council people. Are you not doing that thing like you do with the elevation?
I'm probably.
Oh my god, we're gonna.
My first inclination is to go with what seems to be working in 93% of the villages our size, so I'll say six total for now. I, I'd actually like to study that personally, I'd like to talk about.
We can research it, we need to know.
Well, how they, yeah, can I, and we'll go finish the poll and then maybe I'll even back to my point there for a minute.
So five council.
Five council plus the mayor, my first thought, yeah, that's my first inclination.
Five council plus the mayor, so six.
Okay.
And then. Oh, is there any more? There's more?
I mean, it's six plus the, or maybe it was six plus the council, so, I mean, the mayor.
Three to two.
So you're seven total.
These two are seven, these three are six.
Yep.
And then, do you want to say something?
Oh, I was just gonna say, kind of, I think this relates to the six, seven question. And what I'd like to study, I guess, for lack of a better word, is it feel, felt to me when kind of going through these different towns, that a lot depended on the way, the perspective they had of their mayor's role. Not to single out this one or anything else, want to make sure that's clear. But I found that interesting part of the study for me was, was, was the, what was the mayor's role? Because this idea of, you know, breaking the tie is an integral thing. And yes, it dawned on me that, okay, well, that's interesting, because with six, if we thought they didn't vote now, they're almost never gonna vote when there's only six. So what makes that, what, what do people who take on that role find attractive about that role? Given that they're not necessarily exercising a vote?
The mayor role.
Right, and so I feel like it's almost tied to that somehow. And I'd like to understand more about what the roles in those other places are for their mayor. Is the mayor more of a, does he have more power in an administrative level? And therefore that offsets his need to vote? Or does he really see himself as a, or herself, there's actually quite a few women, see herself as a.
You got a girl right here, you can ask her.
Well, I mean, outside of us.
I know what I think the mayor's role is, and that is.
And I, I, I believe it is too, it's you're basically the spokesperson, basically, means that you run meetings, that's what you're there for. But I, I would challenge.
Janice, I'm saying though, that in these spots, it's because it's different, because that vote's not there, it makes me curious, just my nature. I'm curious, what, is there a difference, that's all, I just like to explore that.
I get to break a tie on again because with five council members.
You may not have some. Only in those cases, but then it, it, it takes all, all the pressure off. When you have a full council, it takes all the pressure off of the thing, because mayor never is gonna really have a say. I, I always like preparing for the meetings because essentially that it could be a tie. And that you have a say in something like that, that, but it forces you to prepare for every meeting because you have to have the issues. And, and being the spokesperson, a lot of times you're invited and you get a different perspective, whether it's me going to a, a, a meeting, I've been there three times now in the airport, which, you know, I'm opining my own opinions about what they did wrong in Denver, Colorado, and why they're doing it the same thing they're doing, they're making the same mistake here and stuff like that. So you get exposed to a lot of things, it's kind of nice, but I just, I like being prepared, but I think it does take the pressure off. But I'd also like to know where the mayor stands on issues too.
Well, that's what I was gonna say is, I mean, people are voting for the mayor too. Like, I would think that they would want to, you know, it's not just a figurehead. I don't think, if that's the case, then just appoint the mayor, like, what's the point of having everybody vote on?
Oh, well, that brings up a good point. The other question in some of these places was that the mayor, the chair, the commissioner, whatever they called it, would be appointed among membership. And so when the mayor could break a tie, it was also how, to, to that extent, then that role was also sort of held accountable to the board, right?
But I, I think in them situations where the mayor's appointed by the council.
Right.
The mayor votes on everything.
That's right, in most cases, not every, but most.
It'd be like in our situation where we have Pro Ten.
But then I think if the mayor's gonna vote on everything, then that person should be elected, like, you know, like, I feel like.
According to the statute.
Yeah, no, I think that's weird though, I think if you're gonna appoint somebody, then they get a vote. But I think the constituents, if somebody's voting on something, then they should have a say in it.
Well, and along these lines, this is sort of exactly what leads me to these questions because things that you would intuit from the available structures aren't necessarily what happens or why people. Yeah, it, it, not a lot of things are logical around the options. So I'm curious, like, I guess I'm thinking, let me just finish saying that, if you're going to be the head, the head of the government, if that's sort of your role, then I almost don't necess, you know, like this idea of, you know, well, although they have a say or doesn't have a say. See, I don't know that I see it that way, or that your say is necessarily a vote. Your say could just be a really good handle on the issues, right? An understanding of all, you know, get doing the meeting prep, being trusted to be able to kind of, I don't know, navigate the people on the board, build consensus, whatever the case is. So there is a say, right, through the mayor, it's just not necessarily perhaps through a vote, I don't know. Those are things I just like to explore.
He's, he says his piece and he swayed his share of votes. I mean, he's, that's the role here now, I guess, if that's what you're saying.
And that's what I've seen in my practice, so.
They, did they vote in Alamoar?
No, no.
They didn't?
But just, just merely what you just mentioned, just trying to build consensus and.
It's been very, like, it's, the statute doesn't say a heck of a lot, right? So I just.
For the sake of simplicity, we're saying that we're five council and one mayor and other towns are doing it, I'm not sure how, how deep you want to dig, or how deep you want to dig. Excuse me, see, he doesn't hear from me. How deep you want to dig with the, the mayor's role or any of the details. It seems to me that's going to a vote, we're, we're just asking to pick a quantity and districts. And as far as changing other things up, we can discuss it, but I'm not sure that we have to.
And so, and I'll just explain, the only reason that's central to me is in that six to seven question. Because in six, knowing that the mayor doesn't vote, I'd like to make sure that person feels empowered in some other way, right? If they're not voting, they're not breaking ties.
You're worried about the mayor's ego?
No, I'm worried about the rule. I, and I think there is something to be said for that, let me, let me tell you why. Because I think to some extent, you know, you know, Nick having been the mayor several times will tell you that if the perception is that you just sort of come, you don't have a say, you know, I think it is also what you do with it, but that's, aside from that, that you really don't have a, you know, a role in some other place, it may be motivating people to run for that mayor spot is not prevalent. And that could be an issue, right? You want to be sure that, that role is defined, and I, I don't know if it is, I'm just hearing from people.
I get what you're saying, because I, I, I personally want to vote, you know, I want to have a say. But, you know, Joe does a good job talking to people, I will say that. Some people will be drawn to sort of the figurehead position, be able to represent and talk to people and drive the car in the parade.
We're gonna have a braggart in the parade.
Do you have a braggart?
We'd have got the car now.
I think people still, my opinion is it'd still be drawn to the mayor role. You know, if for nothing else, hey kids, I'm the mayor of Alamoar.
Get the t-shirt and the badge.
Let's be honest about it, it's, I'm the mayor, you know.
Sometimes people just go after it just to have it.
Tell you.
Why not? I'm over human, right?
Trust me, I remind people I can't buy them a cup of coffee with my title, because we don't even have a coffee shop.
I guess the most frustrating thing about being mayor was when you get residents or something that'll complain to you about something and you feel like saying, "Oh, God, I can't even vote." You know, "I didn't even have a vote today," you know, and it's like, sometimes you feel like, you're kind of impotent, you know, and, and they think that you're the mayor, they think you've got all kinds of power, and in reality, you don't have any power. You know, so in that way, it's, it's sometimes tough, you know, trying to negotiate the, the thing, but.
I feel like I should be here for this, and you guys can talk about it.
We'll call you again when we get there.
I, I do think it's a good idea to look and see what other towns are size, how many they have. And I know we've looked at it before, but I can't, I don't, I don't have it with me. But I do, I do like what Mary said in terms of having like one person per like thousand people. So again, that's another reason I like the seven number.
We should go back to the final question, which would be districts, so I'm fine with that since it doesn't sound like we're gonna come to an agreement. But there's maybe a little bit of research of how things are done, but then the final question's, and we won't determine how many districts, just a yes or no on districts, because I think it would be for COG to decide based on our population, so, you for districts?
No.
I'm fine with it.
Yeah, I'd like to explore it.
Okay, so, it's a three to one, so I won't even comment.
Well, I'm curious.
I, I don't see a need for him, because it's, I don't think we're big enough.
So do we just ask Christina?
Sort of punt this to her to kind of find out from the board of elections on what needs to be done. If it's one additional, and we can get to that point in another meeting.
If we do, yeah, but if, for what Barbie, you found out, that it's going to be about $3,000 for COG to.
To do that work.
To, yeah, recreate the existing lines, I mean, there's a whole.
Do we have a, and if we, well, we're not there yet, but we already know what they would charge, so it sounds like we would go that direction, so just get a, we have a number of, what, approximately 3,000 as well? Do we have a budget for that, or is that a separate?
We don't have a budget for that, we'd have to put it in, in the.
I would find out how, like, how much time it'd need. And then again, it's gonna go back to how many we decide on and when we want to start implementing.
And are we all clear that this is gonna be for, put up for a vote first?
Right, we're gonna vote on that, we're gonna talk about that.
I have a comment on that too, I was just gonna say, may, maybe not the vote one, but might be related. I'm thinking that we should try to find a way of, whether it's a poll on the line, on the website, or some kind of an open forum where people can, not like, that we hold one, they can submit a comment. I think we, there's no reason we can't.
I thought we said vote.
I thought we could.
Referendum.
I think you get more rather than just the few that can speak and stuff.
I don't even speak, but I thought even you said.
Yeah, again, I, I, you know, except if it's gonna go, it's gonna take X amount of time. It's gonna go past, when we could get it done for this year, then yeah, we might as well go to the referendum and have a, and have the people vote, because again, you could have a meeting and have 60 people show up that feel one way, but that's 60 out of 6,000.
I think it's gotta go along the balance.
Yeah, this isn't, I, I want to make it clear though, I, this isn't negate my stance on the referendum. What I'm saying is that no matter what, this is gonna cost money, time, resources. Why even bother spending a lot of time exploring it if we're not sure how people feel? I'm just saying in a very casual sense, not part of the story, just to get a feel of what, how people feel about things. It might not be a bad, that doesn't cost, shouldn't cost as much to just put feelers out, whether it's a newsletter.
Just a class team.
Ask, yeah, just ask people what their thoughts are.
We're thinking about putting this to a vote come November, we'd like your input. But we're not spending money on COG until after the people vote, right? We're not gonna district.
Yeah, because it would be 2021 would be when it would be districted.
Well, maybe. I mean, that's the other thing.
They might be curious, people might be curious, but really all we care about is whether they want districts or not, right?
And I started thinking about that, because when you go to vote for an issue typically, there's a big log on it. I'm not sure even if they have a report on what districts are that I don't understand them necessarily that well, even though it's fairly simple.
Yeah.
It's just a representation of your, and how the at-large works and all that kind of stuff.
And I mean, I'm fine with putting something out to the constituents and the residents and let them, you know, tell us what they think. So, you know, maybe the question is, what do you think about adding and what do you think about districts? And try to explain it, I mean, I don't know, because.
Yeah, I think you gotta, certainly gotta, at least explain the idea of districts and what that entails, you know.
Just in general.
Yeah, well, that's gotta be somewhere, and that could be, that could be put on the questionnaire, so just, make an motion to just ask the question and stuff, instead of us just changing the chart, just ask the question if it's.
Can we ask Christina to draft, just give us a draft on a letter that she could send out?
And how would we send it out? Would we go to the HOAs and put it out to them to, to get to their people? Or do we go to a, I mean, I know we're in the process of deciding this land use plan survey.
Yeah, I don't think you put it on that, I think you send it out through the HOAs and then you put it on the website. And then, you know, just be like, just tell us your thoughts, like, because I mean, I think, plus you, I think, I think we're gonna do it, but I think we would like to know.
Where people stand on it down lowly, because it's not something we've really talked about a lot of.
How do you get your feedback back from that?
Well, we could send it out on our.
Our MailChimp.
MailChimp.
Because we, because it goes out to every resident as opposed to putting it on the website.
We can compile it.
It only goes to the residents that signed up for it.
And I'm, and I'd almost, in this case, I would almost steer away from anything that is quantifiable and instead make it an open-ended, a couple of open-ended questions, because then you're forcing them to give you text answers. And we don't want necessarily, oh, they're in favor of this or yes or no, we want to feel and hear, I think, personally, just what their general sense is of it.
I just wanted to know how they, I just kind of wanted to know yes or no.
Oh.
If they supported, yeah.
Well, because.
But more information is always good, I don't, I'm fine.
You know, I think.
I always worry about these, sending these things out, because you get back a sampling of the same people that do respond to anything else, you know, there's certain people that'll respond, some people that could care less I mean, as far as responding, you know, so.
That's why we'd stay away from quantifiable, it sort of keeps you from putting a number, you know, and get, people tend to get stuck on that number, as opposed to what they're saying in a, in a more, yeah, objective way.
We get back from the same 150 people or something, and that makes a decision for 6,000 or 7,000.
That's just my thought, it's up to you.
Well, let's say, let's say we get, you know, 100 back, and they're like, "No, we're gonna not do it." I mean, I don't think we can, I mean, I think we've got a, I mean, yes, I'd like to know kind of what their thoughts are, especially in terms of the, the number and the districts. I would just say, we are going to do this, tell us your thoughts on how many, and do you like the district idea?
I agree with that only because it's, to your point is like, you know, we see it because we're here every day. We're seeing, talking and discussing about the true value of it and why it's important for representation or however many we decide on and stuff. So they, they're not privy to that unless they're listening to the conversation we're having, which they're not. So it's like, it's a, it's a, it could be a knee-jerk response, or it could be just, you know.
Yeah.
You know, could be that guy that's like, "Is this gonna cost us more money, is it gonna raise taxes?"
Those guys are the.
Yeah, you know.
But if Christina words it in such a way like, in order to increase representation, your village council is considering adding an additional seat and going to districts, please give us your thoughts on X, and I don't, whatever you guys come up with.
Yeah.
But something short and sweet, if it's a page, no one's gonna.
The one's gonna read it, and if they have to like, write a dissertation on what their thoughts are, they're not gonna do it.
I was almost hoping for the yes or no simply because, remember the thing you brought up, the invitees? You know, you click on, "I'll be there," or.
Oh, yeah.
Except or don't accept, I didn't know if MailChimp offered such a thing.
They do.
Where people could actually just say yes or no in an email, because those are the ones that get my quickest response. When that survey request that pops up from Amazon and, you know, it says five-star, four-star, they get that. But then when they ask me to go to the, the three-pager, I always say, "No, thanks."
You shouldn't click on any of it.
I shouldn't click on any.
I like the one-question service.
One question.
How, how do we do?
How do we do?
So I'll draft a short little blurb, send it to, yeah, make sure everybody's okay with it. Send it to HOAs and the MailChimp residents list.
I mean, I, I, I think, I think the, the increase or decrease in the amount of council members is an easy one. It's, you know, we want to go to 70, you think, oh, six or whatever. I think the district is more something that's gonna need some kind of explanation there, so that people understand what that means, you know.
Sure.
That they'll have a district and they'll only.
Councils also determine that represented, represent, total representation of the whole community is important. A good way to implement that is through districts.
I'm saying that the, the district will be that the person that's running has to live in that district, so it'll be a, you know, a neighbor, you know.
Right.
And that, that we, whatever, two at-large seats or one at-large seat, whatever, I don't know.
60% of our population's from up north anyways, so I think it'll be that.
I, I think that you need to be very clear too, that we are all in agreement upon this, maybe not the exact specifics, because I don't need pitchforks, pitchforks and torches at the door. That, that this is a good, positive momentum forward for the village and that. That this is a good, positive momentum forward for the village and that.
Village council has unanimously decided.
On that note, I was gonna say, I know that, and we do, I looked at the last input we received too. But I think the key point is that in this type of referendum or whatever it's called, or charter amendment, we're talking about increasing, right, power or vote or representation.
Representation.
Right, as opposed to what some people might perceive as different, the opposite, right? So in this case, I like to think that it would be positive all the way around. They're seeing that we're trying to open the doors, not, yeah.
Well, I said at the last meeting, it tends to, people are gonna tend to follow what, what we, we are saying as council members. If someone calls me and says, hey, I just heard about this. What are your thoughts? I would just tell them, look, there's nothing but good to increase your representation, period, in my opinion. Whether it's six or seven, I personally wasn't different. Others had opinions. So now we're asking the public.
Let me play with the words and I'll send it y'all and we can shoot it back and forth a couple of times.
We are coming up on one o'clock.
Sorry, would that be, like, is that what we would put on the referendum? Do six, seven districts, yes, no? Is that how we would do it?
No, I think we go.
Take the number.
I think, yeah, I think when we do a referendum, we're putting that number on the district, whatever we decide.
Council is proposing, we move to four council members to five.
So it's either, so it's a number.
And then.
So then it's either a number and then, yes, we're gonna do districts, or if we're not, then we don't even put it on there.
And then it would be a change of the charter if, if the mayor does not vote in a tie, because there could be still, even with five, to your point, if there's only four members there, a tie-breaking vote.
Well, maybe we would always, would always still vote in the case.
Right, but there was talk about not having the, right, we don't change that vote. So it just changes in a.
I think what Mary was trying to say is just try to keep it interesting for the mayor's role so that people don't.
I think you have to get, be engaged in this position. You have to understand what, and listen to.
You gotta be willing to go to those other meetings. You gotta, you get care of it.
Yeah, I don't think you're thinking about, the mayor wouldn't vote in a tie, the mayor would opt to vote in a tie.
Oh, yeah, at the very least, yeah.
So what's our clear direction to Christina? The draft an email, but don't send it till we've looked at it?
Yep.
And in the meantime, are we still having a look at those things we agreed on?
I think, yeah, look, the town size, like, the size, like, how.
Yeah, we, we just need a timeframe from COG, how long it would take. We have a number from them approximately, but we need a timeframe of how long it would take and.
That could be an easy answer.
I guess, I guess just to make sure with Board of Elections that there's nothing that they need from us that we.
Yeah.
Yeah, don't get surprised by it. Say, oh, we needed this two months ago.
If they need it by, yeah, if they need it by March, then email has a 30-day response and then it's shut down.
I think it's 90 days. You have to have your ballot drafted and put in 90 days before the election.
And, and just so I'm clear on the research, you had done something with the league where you had gathered a table. Is everybody okay with just looking at that?
Sure.
Yeah, that's what.
The, the only thing in, the only thing that table didn't have in it was of course my more subjective like, well, what do you like about the role here, right? That's not in there. But in terms of like essentially quantifying, that's gonna give everyone a good overview. I can send the table today. I think, maybe I offered that last time and forgot.
I didn't get it. I'll make a note. But in terms of subjective, I mean, the only thing we could do with that is call all those places and, and talk with one person.
Follow the mayor around for a day.
I'll send you an email to send that out. If everybody's okay with that.
I just want to sit there and watch it.
Is it, is it just the size and the size of the council?
Yeah, you just pulled something from the league. I mean, she's, she's already got it.
Yeah, if it's the school of government, you just download their entire table of all the governments in North Carolina. And they have like this huge spreadsheet that shows you, you know, whether the mayor votes, whether it doesn't have any numbers. I mean, it's just huge. But, and then you can search or filter and find stats.
I'll send you an email.
On a side note, is anyone opposed to me going out of our district and talking to an elementary school? Because Andy Ridge invited me to go and talk about government and roads. So I.
Have fun.
I, I found her, she was the one heading up the arts and crafts thing at the last event we had. She's like, hey, would you come talk to my kids? And I said, yeah, we've done that before, but I'd be happy to. So she gave, you gave a note over at Marvin in the past. All right, moving on. We're good there? Clear? Okay. Moving on to the next is rules, next agenda item, final one is the rules of procedure changes. Since we didn't get into it at all, who had that?
Christina.
Christina.
I will say that she and I also have a hard stop at 1:30. Just so everyone can work out.
Watch, I.
What time is it?
And these are the same rules that y'all seen a couple of different times. The last time we stabbed this was sometime in the fall. And I made the changes that y'all had suggested then. Honestly haven't looked at it too much in detail since then, so we can go over it. But basically everything that y'all saw last time that you wanted me to change, it's changed. With the exception of whatever highlighted in the memo. I did not include a roads meeting, a roads update at each meeting. I just didn't feel like we would have something to report on roads every single two weeks, so I didn't, I didn't put that in.
Is the planner update in there?
That planner update was in the first, if you look at the page, what's page eight?
So that's where I wasn't following. So the updates on the rules of procedure. The catalyst was when we said, let's fix the agenda key, or whatever we want to call it. The table of contents for the agenda.
It was just a combination of different things, because we, I mean, there was no real clear direction as to what staff's responsibility was in terms of sending the agenda out and staff's involvement in the agenda process. So we were just trying to, trying to clean it up and make it clear as to what our expectations are when it comes to agenda setting primarily. And then different things that were supposed to be in meetings. Like I, I wasn't aware that we were, we had planner updates in every meeting until Mary had brought that to my attention, because it was nowhere written, so I wouldn't have known that. So we're just trying to clean it up so that it's pretty straightforward, so that everyone knows what's supposed to be where. Does that make sense? And then also, we were trying to really steer away from, well, not steer away. We were trying to steer towards what we're actually doing in those work session meetings and trying to make it more about work session type things. Whereas currently what we're doing is, and correct me if I'm wrong Barbie, we're talking about the agenda and then all the work session in the regular meeting, and then the work session is kind of carryover from the regular. We're trying to kind of flip that so that the work session is really geared towards what we're gonna talk about in the regular. Did I say something?
No, I just said it's the work. We're doing the work and then when we go to the meeting, we just vote on everything.
Because unfortunately, that's the greatest originally, what I originally brought up, that was the original thought of it. And it morphed into becoming a second meet, an actual second meeting, which, you know, I don't think we, at this point, we need a second meeting every month, you know. If we have a work session, we can.
We do all the work.
Do all the work, yeah.
We're trying to get the meat of stuff accomplished in this, you know, day work session meeting and then the actual action stuff accomplished in the regular. It's kind of what the overall intent is. If that makes sense.
So basically all the, you know, all this talking and we vote on it at the regular.
But a lot of it would be like, if we, in a work session or it's open discussion, which is what I envision, where I come in with an idea maybe from my district at some point, if we go that route and stuff. And that's what we're gonna be encouraging constituents to go to their district leader to bring it to the agenda in the work session where we can propose it. Does it be brought up as a matter? Discuss as much as you can. But then from that work session timeframe to the actual meeting, we, we learn more and gather more information and then we hopefully can come to a decision with a little bit of debate if it's needed. And that's how that.
And that's where you would direct staff to get things done, like y'all just told me to do XYZ for a charter change. And then so, let's just say that we had to take another vote on it. We would present that at the regular session. Y'all talk about it more. But this would be the time where staff, over the next few weeks, staff has the time to go do additional research.
We would, would need to, you know, have the full on discussion again at the meeting. We would basically say, we're all good, we're all good, we've done this, XYZ, take a vote. Is that right?
They do like debate. They like, do like hearing some debate. You can't just, you know, come to.
I, I, I kind of look at the work session. I mean, I think we need to, I don't know what it's in here, but I mean, I, I think in our, our regular meetings, we really need to follow Robert's rules. We need to be more, you know, professional about how we conduct our meetings. We need to, you know, try and shorten them, you know, like you said, not have as much thing. And I, I kind of look at the work session as being more of a free-wheeling kind of, where we can, you know, interrupt each other maybe a little bit or something, you know, we're, we're having more discussion and it's more, you know.
Look at me, I never interrupt. I'm just kidding.
I'm just saying, you know, where it's more of a free-wheeling kind of, you know, I mean, it's an open meeting. People could come and sit and people could hear the transcript or, or could hear the recordings. But I think we need to be, at that meeting, it's, doesn't need to be as formal as, you know.
Brainstorming.
Yeah, I mean, more brainstorming, more throwing ideas back and forth, maybe more, you know.
Which I like that, because I'm all about doing that. I think that's a good idea. The question is, how do you set the agenda for that? Like, how do you set the agenda for the work session?
Yeah, well, I mean.
Because I mean, I feel like with the agenda, it's like, okay, you've got this topic and then you need all this like background stuff. Well, if nobody wants to talk about it, then what's the point of doing all the background stuff?
Sometimes it does feel like we're just trying to fill space. You know, what if each person could only bring one item to a work session? I just threw it out there. I just thought of it. But to Kim's, I, I think what I heard Nick say is it's more relaxed and we're, we're throwing ideas around. And to me, it's like this discussion about the charter going to the ballot, it gave us time to think about it. You brought it up and then we got to think about it across two meetings. And she's got clear direction. So to me, that's what a work session is. You talk about it, you have time to think about it. And by the time you come to the regular meeting, we're all responsible to present our case and then vote. And if you haven't decided by then, you've had enough time, you know, you're probably gonna be able to vote it.
Yeah, I think you want to be, where you don't have to have, again, now at the regular meeting, go with a two-hour discussion about this, we were.
I agree.
Yeah, we're not discussing, we pretty much.
And majority of our, our agendas are primarily driven by staff. I mean, you look at our past agendas, mostly everything that's added on there is staff-initiated. So I think you'll have one or two things here or there that council adds. That council members add here and there, which is totally fine. But I think what the majority of you'll see is work session stuff being primarily staff-driven. And then in the, in the regular meetings, we'll have other discussion that y'all want to bring forward, that we have time to research.
Well, I think the stuff you all put on there should only be, we need answers on this to do, you know, to keep moving things forward. We need answers from you all. Barbie needs us to decide on a webpage.
On which one?
On which one?
No, no, you. On which one? Sorry. Which, which agenda? Sorry.
On the work session.
Work session, okay. I'm sorry.
About work session, you guys put together the agenda for work session.
Well, I'm just saying just items in general. Like, just looking at this one, I mean, we had the public hearing for the trail ordinance.
That's your next pick, which website?
No, I'm sorry. No, I meant like.
Budget classification.
I'll pick right now.
Tax refunds. I mean, everything in here is, I mean, the lighting plan, of course y'all actually drove that. But I mean, a lot of these things, it's stuff that we just have to get done because it's driven by citizens or like the trail standards ordinance. I mean, that's just stuff that day-to-day happens, you know, that we have to get action on.
So on that note, I feel here, I think the work session could very quickly add up if it's a lot of, hey, you know, I need your feedback on this. Some of you who've been around longer might, might know what I'm talking about, but, and be able to give insight. But it felt like a lot of that Friday memo stuff used to ask that. Am I right there, Nick? Like, if, you know, where, if it was just a minor thing, like, why does it even have to be on the agenda, right? Things that are within the administrator's general purview, like, I don't know, I think it's something.
She just wants her opinion. She doesn't even vote.
Yeah, she just wants to be, right. To, to me, I think in that whole Friday, I know you, I talked to you a little bit about it. There used to be this Friday memo that would come up on Fridays, and I think it would go out to the council members. I don't know, I wasn't one, I just heard about it. So, but it would kind of ask them, hey, guys, I need your input on this. And everyone would give input and it would take a ton of stuff off agendas, because it would allow you guys to feel empowered over some of the smaller items.
I, I, I sort of think the, the, the work session is kind of, you know, driven by the upcoming agenda. You know, stuff that's on the upcoming agenda that we think we need to talk about. We do it in a work session two weeks before the meeting, so we have, you know, when we go to a meeting, we don't spend, again, two hours talking about the thing. And we could have, you know, you know, I don't know, I mean.
Like the light, like, you don't see that overhead light for the roundabout, right? I mean, maybe that's not the best example. But if you had put that out and, I don't know, someone says, yeah, huh, yuck, that's terrible. Someone else said, yeah, as long as they don't have an ugly poll. And you've got a general idea and there was, you know, that to me, we probably could have saved the agenda item, right?
Yeah.
I don't know.
See, I, I have hesitancy towards that. Because I don't want to have you say no, you say yes, you say no, and then y'all don't hear each other's viewpoints on that. And then I go with the no's, but then the yeses don't hear what the no's are, which would, the yes could have converted to a no or vice versa.
Lights might not, maybe not a good example. Maybe there, can you think, let's put it this way. Can you think of something that's come up where you probably could have just thrown out a question and?
Personally, I can't, because I like to hear all of your discussions about things. I don't want anyone not hearing one person's side of it.
Instead of a Friday memo, she does it, she does the administrative report. And there are often times where you're asking us a question within that report and we do a open, public meeting, straw poll, and give you direction. It's kind of what you're talking about, but it's still done in the meeting, just quicker.
Right, and maybe that, more of that needs to be on those work sessions. I find that sometimes administrative questions, reports that are quick can seem to take up a lot of, and not no fault of yours, but it can take up a lot of time that the public's sort of sitting there waiting. I don't know.
I just don't know how to set the agenda for what you're saying, Nick. Like, for the work session, you're like, that's a bunch of stuff that we need to talk about to then take to the, and do for the, the regular meeting's agenda. I don't know how to set that agenda. And we have to have an agenda and we have to talk about what's on the agenda. So that's what I'm struggling with. Like, how do you set the agenda for the work session? Because I do, I want, I love the idea of it being free-flowing and you can bring stuff up and you're like, oh, you know what, that's a good idea. But that, whatever that good idea was, is not necessarily on the agenda. You know what I'm saying? Does that make sense?
I think you could, you could have a slot for new proposals or something like that where.
But then that, that can turn into a free call.
Yeah.
It can, but it's just a discussion. Just say, hey, can we put this on, you know, I'm looking at this and, and this was an issue in this neighborhood and. Whatever the issue is, and then it goes around the room and we decide if we put it on the, the meeting to be discussed. And then by that time, the information that we, they gather for us or we gather on our own, we've got in our mind how we're gonna vote.
Sorry, maybe that's it. We do a slot that we.
Wouldn't you finish your thought? And I'm gonna take you guys in a slightly different direction.
Do a slot that it's like, okay, you know, agenda ideas or.
I like that.
Constituent, I don't know, agenda, I don't know. But do something that it's like, okay, there's something that Jill and I want to talk to everybody about. It's not on the agenda. We'd like to talk to you about it in the work session. But I don't necessarily know, like, there's not a bunch of, I'm not gonna do like a memo, because there's not a bunch of research to do for it, but it's just something that needs to be brought up and talked about to see if everybody's interested. And I feel like that's a good slot. And then if everybody's interested, we can put it on the agenda and get background information and then do all the hard work for it.
And you would get a feel for how busy it is.
Can I just, can I say?
I don't know, I'm not sure.
I like that, but I just, you want to go ahead?
Well, I just want to say one thing, because the prime example just came up this past week with something you wanted to add, which was the law enforcement stuff, the shared services stuff. And I recommended, let's wait until, you know, this date, do it. So some of that stuff, I think you can leave to, to my discretion to figure out where it needs to be put.
Okay.
And that's just, that's just me speaking out loud. I don't, I don't know if y'all agree.
And then the ETJ stuff too.
That's right, yeah.
Well, we kind of do that, right? I mean, in a way, we sort of like.
I know, but like, there's some stuff that it's like, I don't have, I mean, there's some stuff that I'm just not gonna have background information on and, and.
Well, that, that's where you tell me to, if everybody is in agreement, like ETJ.
Well, that's what I'm saying. That's what I'm saying, like the work, so it's like, okay, is everybody interested in doing ETJ? And then we talk about it and now it's like, oh, it's an ETJ, because I didn't know where an ETJ was. And then, and then it's like, oh yeah, we're all interested in that, that's a good idea. And then we direct staff to go do that.
Okay, so I, you know what this reminds me of? You know that we were talking about the discussion versus the consideration? Sorry.
Robert's like, I want like a three times ago.
And I gave up my spot. Just only because I want to say this.
Yes, go ahead.
I want to remind everyone that we talked about eliminating the work session.
Oh, we did?
We did. A few months.
A long time ago.
It's been a while. We talked about it. And let me tell you why I'm having done that. So now today, we're talking about making the work session as a sort of a free-for-all to help establish the. So now today, we're talking about making the work session as a sort of a free-for-all to help establish the agenda for the regular meeting, which just to remind everyone, is only two weeks generally from that work session.
Yep.
So, let's pretend for a minute that we're, we're trying to put all our efforts into one meeting a month, that the, that the entire, where, where the public is not only welcome, but they're more likely to come to one a month rather than two a month, okay? With that goal in mind, what Kim said about the agenda items, so I'm not looking at anyone, because I'm gonna forget if I make eye contact with anyone.
We won't look at you.
So what Kim said about having sort of this slot or box to throw agenda items in. Can we consider a solid regular meeting that the public has free access to, but when it comes to forming the agenda, she'll have her items, Joe may wanna add something, I may wanna talk about something. But we filter it through her, she sends out a draft, which you've done more or less the last couple of meetings. And then, you know, we either want it or we don't, but that's one email for you, here's the draft, send me your thoughts. If everyone says no, it doesn't mean, it doesn't mean to go back out. If, if it's split and you need to talk about it more, there's another email. But it's all done with emails rather than a work session. So now, that's all we wanted, just get out.
Hey.
Christine's like.
Just to talk about, I, I think the original, when we talked about doing away with the work session, there was more doing away with, because they were full-balling meetings. So we were now, we didn't want, you know, like I said, it morphed into becoming full-balled meetings, so we were saying we didn't need two full meetings a month.
Well, you're right, but what we just recently did with this, you know, it's rare that we recessed the meeting and then come back and just picked it up where we left off. Gotta be honest, I kind of like that. I kind of like.
The service stuff, right?
Yeah, because, so we had our meeting, the public knew we were discussing these items, but it was midnight, whatever, and we said, we gotta go. We're gonna pick, we're, pick back up, but we don't have another whole meeting scheduled. We're just gonna pick back up, get these done. And hopefully then we're done. If we're not, we can recess it again. You know, there's something I like about this and I can't put my finger on it, other than we're getting it done.
Well, I think that's what the work said, not right now, not what we're working towards, but I think what the work session used to be was, whatever we didn't get finished in the regular meeting, we carried it over and we just did that. And if we got through the entire meeting, then we wouldn't have a work session. Is that right?
Right, but the problem was is work sessions, work sessions, as I remember, as you were explaining to me, Nick, way, way back when, is were really only, were no actions, in fact, I learned from other council members and mayors, they take no action in work sessions. No, no, no one votes on anything, because that should be for, waited for the public. And if you wanna say your.
The public can come.
I, I understand that, but if you wanna say your three cents, you're saying it at the public meeting, the one meeting that more people are likely to go to. And you can hash it out and talk about what you wanna talk about and then be prepared by that, within that two weeks for, and, and maybe you get to a point where you can hopefully get that message across in.
But if I was to carry over, you're stuck doing real business.
Yeah.
You are, but then, but then that can get, that we can go to a recess meeting and do it.
Do you remember when, do you remember when at the very beginning, I mentioned to you this idea of discuss versus consider on the agenda? That was sort of entrenched in our rules in the sense that when something said discuss and consider, you could assume there would be discussion and a vote. But if it was discuss, you were implying no vote, no action. So to me, when I hear that, that, you kind of clarified where I was coming from, we just met at that point. That a work session then should really only ever be discussion of, there should be no consideration whatsoever. And that's why we made that distinction in the past.
Yes, and I'm fine with that.
So there's that one, that might take care of it, a rule around that. And then, I was thinking more about, I really don't know if I, I brought, I mean, I like the idea of people putting things forward. I'll just say, the only concern there is that if we have like a box for putting ideas in, is just the idea that someone on the public says, well, I didn't see that on an agenda, I didn't see this on an agenda. So it almost has to be like picked up and put somewhere.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, that's why I'm having a hard time. Again, I love the idea of being able to have a free-flowing thing, I just don't know how to set that agenda.
Yeah.
I mean, maybe it's just you put the topic, like, if I'm like, okay, I wanna talk about an ETJ.
Then it's just discuss.
Then it's just that and I don't necessarily come back with this much stuff on it, because if you guys are interested in having one, then I'm not gonna waste my time, I'm not gonna have staff waste their time on it. And then if you guys do wanna do it, then.
So how about on the agenda, just putting for, leaving a blank slot for, items for discussion?
It would just be discussion of ETJ.
Items for discussion.
Yeah, that would be not necessarily new business, but items for discussion and then it's listed, because to Mary's point, if, if somebody wants to learn about an ETJ or a whatever it is, then, then they'll know that it's on there.
To your point, you've got three ideas, you've got three ideas, you've got three ideas and we're all giving it to her. At some point, she's gotta say, hey, guys, we're on the point.
Jesus, Lord. That sounds like Mike's alarm.
At some point, we're gonna get to the point where this meeting's gonna get, I mean, yes, we can put it on there, people can see just what we're gonna discuss it. Do we move forward with it on it, or do we?
Can I just say one thing, if y'all don't mind? I don't.
Just one.
I don't personally see anything wrong with how we've been doing the agenda these last couple of months. So I don't know if we need to take a step out and say, what, what, what do you see wrong with how we're doing it?
It's not wrong, it's us.
Yeah, I, I'm not saying that.
Well, no, so what I was gonna suggest is, from the terms of a work session and a regular meeting, what we do in each ones. If, if y'all want us to do an experiment over the next couple of meetings and go with kind of what this says and see how it flows.
Yeah, because we haven't done one since we talked about this, we talked about this at the beginning of November. We haven't had a work session since.
Just know whatever you're used to, like, what we would do is do this exactly how it's written, so if Mary sends, you know, that she wants to talk about the purchase of Kleenex, you know, over the next couple of months. And she wants to add it to the work session or the, the regular meeting, I'm gonna say, no, let's talk about it in the work session, she brings it up in the work session. So just don't get upset with me over the next couple of weeks.
I think that's good.
If y'all are okay with that.
Yes, I think that's exactly what I was hoping we would do.
Okay.
And seeing exactly that, I almost were afraid just to, to, to pass that without trying it, because I think it's sort of new and I think it could work. But I wanna be, work out the kinks before we cement everything.
So we'll try something new the next couple of times and I'll add it back on the agenda after I get a feel for how it's working. So whether it's two week, or whether it's two months from now, a month from now, Barbie and I will work it out and, and put it on one of our agendas to look at these rules and procedure again, if y'all are okay with it.
Well, I was gonna say, there's obviously a lot of stuff on here that's not.
Correct.
Has to do with the agenda, so do we wanna?
That's what I was hoping, that y'all can just ignore.
Yeah, that's what I was gonna say, can we, can we like approve the ones that don't have anything to do with that?
So, did you get a?
Yeah, I was fascinated by the new water brawler.
We have any water brawler?
Yeah.
Is that okay with you, Nick? Did you just try it?
I, with everything we've talked about, so you're talking about taking this and.
Trying it.
Trying it first. I'm good, I'm happy with that.
Okay.
As far as trying to separate what else is in there, and I point to those procedures. And, and make a decision today, is there anything in there that you have to have? Because if we're gonna do it, I'd rather just do it all thing.
Okay, no, that's fine.
No, I don't have to, a lot of the other stuff is just.
Wording.
Yeah, and, and the, um, adopt, not the adoption of agenda, the way the agenda's proposed, which, what I've been doing.
Yeah.
What I've been doing is what's proposed in here. So if y'all are okay with what's been going on, and that's Barbie or us in and out, y'all looking at it, if there's anything you need to add, 24 hour or 12 hours.
So, okay, so this is, what, the 23rd of January, so can we say by April's meeting? That'll give us three work sessions, two regular sessions, the retreat, can we say by the regular April meeting that we can see if we like it and then get these approved or?
Yeah, I like that. Let me tell you, the other thing that's been on my mind is when you talk about the way we've done agendas, like even that, I'm, I don't know, but you, I've lately been wondering, should we be shifting some of that so that the public can hear what they want, new business and so on, and then do reports after?
Yeah.
So just sort of feeling some of that stuff out, like, might be a good idea.
I mean, I like, I, I feel bad.
You mean rearranging?
Rearranging it.
Like, you know how we've got reports right at the beginning and then?
Oh, okay, okay.
People are sitting.
Yeah, presentations should be limited and should be out in the very beginning.
We should, we should try and streamline it so that the public, it's here, can hear what they wanna hear and get out of it.
Yes, exactly.
Or if they wanna get out, I mean.
Like, I'd rather put like the consent agenda like at the, at the bottom.
Yeah, yeah, that's a good idea.
You know, I mean.
Quickly done?
Yeah.
The only presentations that we historically allowed to go first for the sake of the dead time is the voice count, yeah.
Okay.
And they're, and they're generally pretty cool about sitting in the audience and watching them all while, I mean, I think they're required to do so much.
Yeah.
And, and at a meeting anyway, so they do stick around for a certain amount of time.
Um, I said.
But they maybe do like, sorry.
I want directions from them, because.
Like new business first, like new business, not first, first, but like new business, I like how we swapped that around last time.
So what's good Barbie?
I don't mind rearranging whatever you want, but I'd like a direction.
Not yet, maybe if you just start feeling it out as we're saying, yeah.
You wanna give her, you got eight minutes, you wanna give her, six minutes, you wanna give her a template for the next meeting?
Um, agenda items, we won't have presentations, because it's work session, right?
Oh, are we talking just about the work session?
And do y'all have any preference? When it comes to unfinished and new business, to, to me, it really, to me, it doesn't matter, it's, it's all action items in general. So if y'all are okay with just combining those two?
I thought it was a necessary structure.
No, in, in fact, for work sessions, you, we used to have a different, there's probably a different template in there and it literally had no new and old. It was just a list of items, that was it, for work.
Can you just email us a suggestion?
I can send you that template too.
So another way, and I, I was just thinking, yes.
Page eight has so much.
I just thought of something, to your point about how do you get that all on there, but maybe it helps that, say you wanna talk about something. I'll give you a perfect example of the meeting we went to with Wesley Chapel and how they want us to bring it to you guys and stuff. So may I suggest during council comments, that you have that prepared to suggest to the council, to say, hey, can we look at this at the work session? So now we've announced it, we sort of have an agreement if that's gonna be applicable.
I know, but I feel like half the time we don't get to council comments, because we run late with our hard stop.
But we make time for it, to your point, is we have a hard stop at 10 o'clock and unless there's a closed session after, we're closed. And then we just recess the meeting till, whatever, anybody depending on what the time.
What time is the next work session?
10.
10 o'clock.
10. We, when is that?
Next Thursday.
Should we, it was you and I at one of them earlier, Rich, I'm like. Nick, forgive me for speaking for you, but is later better for you?
It's on Thursday. I show it at 10 a.m.
If we change the time, I'll need a seven-day notice.
So we'll make it to that, I mean, we're not supposed to do that.
Yeah, I mean, normally 10 would be better for me, but next Thursday, it's actually good for me to add it at 10, because at 1:45 I have an appointment.
Do you wanna relook at that, you know, at the work session?
Robert, do you, do you wanna try this new process first to see if it works better like this, before we start talking about changing the times, or do you wanna?
Yeah, okay, no, I, time's for, for Nick.
It would still be the process, but the time is just, yeah.
I'm okay with leaving it at that.
Okay, and then to your question.
So I can accept that.
To your question, Tristan, I'll be with you in just a second, you can just have a seat wherever. Your question about proposed agenda formatting, if you look at page eight, it's exactly proposed, like I just mentioned, including the new and the old together. But you would just, what I'm hearing y'all say is you would basically take presentations and recognitions and push it down the chart.
Yeah.
So do you see on, what's crossed out on page nine, I guess it would be, where it says unfinished new business items may be reorganized into list form? That was what used to happen, it would just be like, there is no unfinished and new, it would just be like a list of items.
And if you look on page eight, uh, probably three quarters of the way down, it says, action agenda includes unfinished and new. That's basically the same, same thing.
Do you guys want to pick this up?
In the, in April, I think.
You wanna recess it tomorrow?
Do you wanna recess and pick it up?
Well, I think April-ish is, is when we're gonna reconsider this.
I'm talking about the agenda part, if you wanna continue talking about, because Kim's gotta go and you and I have a meeting.
Um, I, I, I think let's, let's try it out.
Yeah, I agree.
I think let's try out, try it out for a little bit and then, you know, if in three meetings or like, or four meetings, whatever, everybody's like, oh, this is just not working or, you know, then we can talk about it then. But I say, let's try it, but then let's try to have this nailed down, the new rules, the procedure changes, let's try to make sure that we've all read them, we're all good.
We've ironed over them.
The extra stuff.
Yeah.
And see what works and what doesn't work and then let's try to like have that voted on in April.
So what I'll do over the, if everybody's okay with that, what I'll do over the next couple of months is, is follow this, how I've got it written. And so y'all can take notes and feedback as to what's working, what's not working over the next couple of months and you can just go for there.
I think so, or whoever else is fine, that's fine. Can I just, I'm gonna just request, do you mind sending it to me in, in like word form? I don't know why, I find the PDF really hard to read and then I can break out the spacing.
Was the minutes for May 31st on this meeting?
No, we tabled it for the beginning of February meeting.
And Melanie suggested that we all look at them ourselves individually and make sure you go through it, because she found a number of errors that she wants to make sure that we all do.
Yeah.
You sent them out?
To Melanie's, yeah, I sent Melanie's.
So, okay, we good?
Okay.
Last item on the review action items, should we go there? That's from last meeting, right? Because you didn't review any action items from the last meeting.
I can take that Barbie's.
Well, I've got them all the way from January A. There's not very many and, and between me and Christina, we kind of figure it out.
Okay.
So what I heard from January the 8th is cancel, is to revise minutes with council, I guess is what I got. Dates of officer presentation with Wesley Chapel, the check on the bar craft bond and send out hiring and interview, interviewing for planner. I'm not sure exactly what we were sending out, but.
She did it already.
Did she do that? Okay, good. All right, so I didn't have anything for the 14th. So what I picked up on today is Christina to contact the board of elections on makeup of council. And then Christina, council told Christina to move forward with researching districts and numbers with COG. And then Christina to draft a memo or report explaining the council numbers and districts, send to council to review before sending out.
Okay, so basically the timeframe is all we're gonna get from COG, I think is all we have. Yeah, I can spend the money.
No.
Okay, um, any other additional comments we're missing? All right, go around real quick, council comments.
Nick, you wanna start? I think it was, again, it could be, I think we have some good discussions. I wish we, you know, like I said, the work sessions could be this kind of thing where we have a little bit more, you know, free-willing kind of discussion, not as formal. I mean, I would like to get to a point where our regular scheduled meetings, we could, I mean, you know, having watched Charlotte and Monroe and all these different municipalities when they conduct their meetings, they seem to move very quickly and very efficiently, you know, they have as many items on their agenda as we do and, you know, seems like most of the discussion has already taken place and they're basically almost at halftime, it seems like they're just putting it up, it's vote, vote, vote's done and move on to the next thing. You know, I mean, I, I'd like to try and streamline our, get our meetings that we're not spending five, six hours at a, at a regular meeting, you know, we don't, we don't get everything done. Well, we can do that, you know, through the work session process a little bit, a little bit, you know, trying to have better communication between each other, you know, when, before the meetings, where we have an idea where we stand or what we, what we can work out. But, you know, by and large, I think we, you know, this would be a good meeting and hopefully move forward. And again, I'm sorry and thank you for Christine and Barbie, you, you're working, putting these things right for us, that's good.
Mary?
No, I have nothing.
Okay.
Thank you Barbie and Christina, I'm calling it out.
All right.
Yeah, just thanks to staff.
Okay, and then, you know, you guys said this is a meeting we had with.
Oh, yeah.
Wesley Chapel, which I think we announced that they wanted to reach out to us to talk about, just so you guys know that this is what we did. And they wanted to talk about how the sheriff contract is.
Public services.
Public services overall.
Wesley Chapel?
Wesley Chapel. Wesley Chapel and Weddington. So there were two council people, so there was no quorum of any kind, but there were two from Wesley Chapel, two from Weddington, and us two. And just talking about, you know, how things are done with, because they, they're all getting the same thing we're getting.
And that's the presentation I got today, so I can report that.
And they, they know it's coming and stuff, but they just want, you know, I think, a little collaboration, and maybe, you know, a number and power, or power and numbers, meaning that they have their own, we have our own. And I don't know if you guys know, we don't have much say in what they present to us, so we'd like a little more say.
Did Wesley Chapel speak about what they're planning on doing by chance to, to y'all?
Not.
No, but that, they wanna, they want all of us to work together with that.
Okay.
Without, like, I feel like we need to like be.
Yeah, they, they feel the contract should be similar. Our, our, really should not be much different than what, you know, what they're doing, like what times and.
Ours and Wesley Chapel, if I'm not mistaken, is the same, because the numbers are the same, but their request is different between the two of them.
Sure, sure. I mean, they may need more people. Anyways, I just wanted to put it out there.
But they want, they wanna work, those two towns wanna work together with us for public services.
Okay, and we'll, we can talk about that at the 131 meeting.
Okay, and.
131 meeting?
That's all I, what? And that's all I had at this time. So need a motion to adjourn the meeting?
I would.
All is in favor?
Hi. Do you need these?